Make a noise.
We start Chris.
Two minutes and we're gonna be live streaming, hold on. We're live streaming.
Meeting will come to order. Time is now five thirty P M on Monday, April twenty first, twenty twenty five. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts Humanities. My name is Reggie De Lee, Chairman of the Commission on Arts Humanities, African American man wearing a black shirt and a summer blue jacket. I would now call the role. If you hear your name, please answer. Preston, Cora, Julianne.
President.
Cecil.
President.
Meches.
President.
Maggie.
President.
Kimber.
Carla.
President.
Hector. Janice.
President.
Richard.
President.
And Quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session. It's governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government and Open Gov. Open Gov Office at D C dot gov. Notice that the meeting was posted in the D C Register, on the Commission's website, D C R S dot D C dot gov, and on the D C Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at open dash D C dot gov. The meeting is being conducted in a virtual format with the Commission as joined remotely using the Zoom meeting platform and in the room. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel and electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. Is there any objections to the agenda and minutes that were previously circulated? So here an objection, the agenda for this meeting and minutes from the previous meeting stand as a doctor. Are there any voting items? Here and now we shall proceed to the land acknowledgement. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical building rich and respect and connection across all areas of heritage and justice. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried, the honor of the truth. We stand up ancestral last being hatched and with God we people, we pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Evening and welcome to everyone. Fatness turn out with the commissions. I love it. That's why we won't mind some of the Jack. We have an interesting meeting this evening with reports of the director and the Public Arts Committee and other topics as well. Um, so tonight we were here from artist Martell Artist, which is part of our usual process of making sure we remember why we're here by seeing the work of the artists that we support and encourage and nurture in that relationship. So, Martell Artist, you here?
Think they're on their phone.
Martell, we think we see you, but we don't really.
Well, Martin.
Oh, so maybe, sorry, that's Martin. Yeah, so Martell isn't.
Yeah, we thought that was, we thought that was, that was them, the joint.
Not happy with this.
No.
Hopefully he will come in later. Notice that he comes later than that. So we'll move on to the public comment portion. We have Jonathan Leszeki signed up for public comment this evening. The Commission welcomes your comments. They're very important to us. Please note the comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaged into dialogue at this time. Purpose of this tonight is to queue publicly from us, the Commission about your meetings. If members of the public have actual questions, staff will be glad to power in them. So, Mr. Leszeki, would you like to begin your comments, please?
You're on mute. You're on mute. Actually, can someone tell him he's on mute?
You're on mute, sir.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Jonathan Bessassi. It's an honor for me to, to have the ability to talk to you tonight and I have like a small proposition. I feel like this is a very, it's not like it's not a normal capital in, I, I want to say like in the, the, in D C we have like a huge community of artists and museums and stuff like that. But the, like the real galleries, the, the market is like pretty small, but I feel we, D C is like very rich for the, we have like many organizations and I feel if we can like connect together sometime, that can be like a, a benefit for the artist. Like I, I, I win the grant la, la, last season and um, I, 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 I don't, I, I don't know. I, I feel it was good, but I feel like we can do something more stronger, better. I, I don't know. I can't send, I, I'm sorry for my English, but I have like my proposition in um, I can send you my proposition and maybe you can understand in a better way what I try to say. Can I?
Yes.
You are, I sent you in the chat?
I want to talk, say, we probably can't, we probably can't, we, we can try to show if you put it in the chat, we can try to show.
We've been having some technology challenges, so.
Okay, and can I send you something in, uh, on an email or?
As to whom should we hear? Um, you can email it to, uh, Corinne Miller, that's K A.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Put it in the chat.
It should be, yeah, just put it in the chat.
Put it in the chat, please.
It's in the chat.
Thank you so much. Oh.
Why Corinne doesn't help. One of us have to show it. He's gonna email something now to show it. I think that's hard. That, anything was supposed to be emailed beforehand if you wanted to share type deal. So, so it's hard for us to do it now, but you can try to, here, I'll put my.
I, I try.
I can share from this.
I don't know if you received something?
Because it's also fine if you just send it to us and then we can read it.
In the same time.
I just sent him an email from my account, so he has it in front of him, so he can send it back.
So you should have received an email from us.
Where, where he got the link from, from me is where he can, is where he can, uh.
I was confirming that you got an email from us, that you get an email back to us?
No.
Where was it sent?
It would, it's how he got this link. He got this link from, from the email that I sent him. I just replied to that email thread.
So the email that invited you to this meeting, uh, we just sent it from that email, email account to which you can send.
Yes, I just get the email. Um, okay, I already send everything in this email?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. All right.
And we can hear the, the tech people too. So, um, Reggie, if you don't want to, uh, repeat, we can hear him as well.
Great.
We're gonna hear this. Well, we just want to put it up on the screen if.
Trying to show it on the screen.
In the same time, I want to inform you, I have a show, uh, this weekend in the Zenit Gallery. If someone want to come.
What, what day and what time?
It's um, Saturday, Sunday, it's a Friday, Saturday. Uh, until, uh, it's the twenty five, twenty, twenty, around the twenty five.
April twenty fifth. From what time to what time?
It's the six at eight.
From six until eight?
Yes.
Great. At the Zenith Gallery?
Yes.
Great.
Congratulations.
No.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Where are we?
I still don't have that, any mail. If it's a big large file, it may take a while. I think we.
No, it was, um.
Corinne, you said you had it?
Yeah.
He forwarded me.
But she would get on like a reader.
Sure, I'm trying to read it.
Okay.
Corinne will read it.
You're good.
Right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If I can read this. Um, how could we evolve and enrich the local art scene? Washington, D C is a unique city and like other major cultural capitals, it doesn't have a vast network of private galleries. This might seem like a limitation, but in reality, it reveals a hidden strength. We are home to exceptional cultural institutions, some of the world's most prestigious museums, inspiring alternate, alternative venues and a genuine commitment to supporting the arts. There's immense potential here, but this potential remains, remains underused as long as the connections between artists, institutions, researchers, educators, and cultural stakeholders are not fully developed. The real challenge isn't only about funding more projects, about building bridges, fostering collaboration, and creating meaningful connections. Building bridges between worlds. What if we imagine regular meetings between artists supported by the Commission and the speakers invited to its conferences? These individuals, often influential and curious, could become mentors, cultural ambassadors, or even institutional allies inspired by our work. Explore new artistic partnerships. My own work, for example, explores themes of cartography, migration, memory, anatomy, and animal sculpture. These topics could resonate with a wide range of institutions. Smithsonian National Museum of Natural History or the National Zoo, my animal sculptures and reflections on biodiversity. National Museum of American History or Anacostia Community Museum for narratives around memory and migration. Purshorn Museum Phillips Collection or Rubell Museum for contemporary installations and hybrid practices. Art Tech House or Dupont Underground for immersive experiences at the intersection of science and art. Give voice to local artists. Washington is home to incredibly talented and diverse artists. Many are just a few opportunities away from greater visibility or major career breakthroughs. I believe that with more platforms and access, many of these artists could thrive right here without needing to seek recognition elsewhere. Why not create a regular opportunity for artists supported or awarded by the Commission to speak during conferences or public events? Even brief presentations could have a meaningful impact, showcasing a current project, sharing a residency experience, or proposing a collaboration. These moments would not only spotlight local talent, but also create direct engagement with decision makers and potential partners. From intention to action, activate cross-sector exchange. While some efforts already exist to connect artists with conference participants, many of these cultural or academic figures are unfamiliar with our work. With intentional design, these connections could become real opportunities. We could imagine dedicated presentation times before or after events where artists can share their creations and perspectives. This would allow for genuine dialogue, potential mentorship, and possibility of building lasting partnerships. The result, a richer, more interconnected, and dynamic local ecosystem. The next section is involve institution in artist selection and exhibition. It could be valuable to involve cultural institutions in the selection or dissemination of artists' work. Their input would enhance visibility and foster shared recognition. Displaying our works, whether temporarily or as part of a rotating program, would allow broader audiences to engage with them and deepen institutional relationships. And the last section is go beyond the museum walls. Beyond classical institutions, Washington also boasts vibrant alternative venues, festivals like Art All Night, residency programs such as Creative Spark, mural projects like Murals D C, as well as schools and libraries that could serve as spaces for creation and transmission. Why not develop cross-residencies where an artist is hosted by a museum, school, or scientific institution to create a site-specific work? Or curate group exhibitions where artists and scholars collaborate around a shared theme? This isn't about asking, this isn't just about asking for more resources. It's about designing a living, breathing strategy, one that encourages dialogue, supports interdisciplinary exchange, and empowers artists' connection with educators, researchers, curators, and ad agents. I'd be honored to contribute to this reflection, to share my experiences, and to present my work in a future meeting. Together, I believe we can turn the resources we already have into a vibrant, supportive, and meaningful ecosystem. Thank you again for your dedication and for this inspiring initiative.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And as it is a Corinne Miller, is the right person to, Corinne, because she's the one that will help us respond and, and work with you on that. So, Corinne, if we could task you with giving back to them and working through what we can do, some things I think already works, actually, what we're doing. But did you want to add anything beyond the statement she read?
No, I just want to say thank you. I hope I can help in a certain way to, uh, to, to progress, I want to say. And I hope it was not too pushy, or I, I don't know, you know, it's, it's complicated to, to say that, to, to explain that sometime.
No, it's not a problem.
Merci beaucoup. And just to remind my show, the, the show is, um, in the Zenit Gallery at seven, uh, five thirty to seven thirty in the, Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, five thirty to seven thirty in Zenith Gallery.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Romanesha Corinne touches me, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll go on to the executive directors, Corey Harret. Yes. Mayor Myers, Deputy Director of the Commission, Executive Mayor, General, will, will, will off white sweater, short, deep thing. And I would like to say to the gentleman who just spoke, we do have his painting right outside of my office. So every day I walk out and I see his work and it's pretty interesting to see. So. First off, with staff updates, um, we would like to welcome our new procurement analyst, Alexis, uh, Dillard. Ms. Dillard came to the agency from the D C Department of Corrections, where she worked as a contract administrator. C H is currently working with D C H R and our efforts related to staff realignment. Our first batch of staff members have had their initial audit to D C H R. We were informed that the next batch will be notified and interviewed in the next couple of weeks. They told us after. We anticipate three batches of employees plus nine troops will be interviewed and will have interviews with D C H R. Uh, C H changed his telework posture on April first. Our new schedule reflects more days in the office reunion, or two days to three. We are also exploring other ways we can be more present in the community, more updates on this report. So our O I G report. Agency has received this final O I, O I, O I G report, which includes our audit responses. The last audit performed by O I G happened before two thousand thirteen. I looked for it and it was not language. So, I won't, I will not concede when, when the last one actually did occur. This evaluation covered fiscal years, uh, twenty twenty one, uh, through twenty twenty four. Since recommendations remain along with one opportunity for improvement, C H responded to all findings citing existing or newly implemented standard operating procedures addressing issues with app, uh, application completeness, oversight activities, and conflict of interest training. This audit demonstrated the course corrections implemented after my rifle and suggestions by our commissioners have had a positive impact on the operations of the agency. In the areas identified for improvement, we will continue our work with D C H R to address the succession planning for key positions here at the agency to ensure continuity between separate tours of duty. We are working with our O, O G C to understand the prominence of our fifty mile radius policy, uh, regarding our art bank program, but have been reassured that we are still within compliance with, uh, D C government. Both the audit and our responses can be found on the O I G website. Already begun meeting with commissioners individually to discuss the project. On topic now is our city budget. The mayor's office announced that the city is anticipating a four hundred.
Uh, I have some that I.
Yes.
Just, I think there was a, I think there were, they just were all on mute.
The ma, the mayor's office announced, I was like, the mayor, don't worry. Uh, the mayor's office announced that the city is anticipating a four hundred and ten million dollar shortfall that will impact its current fiscal year's budget due to Congress not yet passing the Senate-approved District of Columbia Local Funds Act, twenty twenty five. As a result, the mayor issued an order to the city administrator's office to develop a plan, a plan to address this shortfall. The C H has been working with the city administrator to see how the agency will be impacted. Once we know more, we will be communicating updates with both staff and commissioners. We are still hopeful that Congress will do its part in restoring D C budgets to its previously agreed dollar numbers. We'll talk with grants in a bit more. We currently have four grant programs closing tomorrow. Those are our dual operating support, East Arts Project, events and festivals, both individuals and organizations. Last month, when I reported to you, we had twenty-nine applications. That has now risen to five hundred and twenty applications. I would like to thank the staff for their hard work, along with our commissioners, for sending community members our way and telling them about these opportunities. We are striving to improve both our outward-facing engagements and internal systems. We've increased the number of our workshops, offering onsite office hours, and we are piloting Saturday office hours. And I know, uh, Trill will be discussing that a bit more. Uh, we hosted a Go Go Town Hall at our offices to share both grant information, panel's application guidance, and more general information about the agency. Tomorrow, four twenty-two, we will partner with other regional art funders to bring individuals and organizations together as an opportunity to share the information and to lift one another up. This will be at Penn Social from five P M to eight P M. More information can be found on our website. Internally, we are waiting two quotes so that we can submit our O C P options for a new grant management system that we hope will improve internal work. Behind the uniform, I would like to thank the staff, the curators, the D C Office of Veterans Affairs for supporting the opening behind the uniform that opened April tenth and will run through May twenty-third. I encourage all of our commissioners to see it out in the gallery. Uh, and also, if any of our veterans or artists have patches, but they do not see or represent it on the quilt, the artist has agreed to have those patches added to the quilt. So this is a beautiful, uh, thing. I'm trying to find my signal patch to get on there, but they missed me. So, I'm gonna get that on there, that'd be great. Last hour strategic planning, we are now waiting O C P to review the new statement of work. Once that is completed, they will confirm with us if and when they post it in our executive proposals. Uh, that is the term for, I'm careful questions. Before I go to questions, I want to think, punctuate it to a couple of things that you talked about. So, a couple hours ago, we had an executive committee, and some of these topics came, the O I G report in particular, and the fact that we have responded, the fact that some context isn't important to understand our responses. We're working with each of the commissioners for us to understand full story and context, and then we plan to have an outreach to stakeholders so that they understand the context. Just reading the report, if anyone can get an impression, it's not quite possible for them. So that's one thing we do. The second thing is on the, the budget impact, there have been many conversations about increases in salarying and industry study and that sort of stuff, and all of that is halted as the budget gets reconciled. So concerns, we hear the concerns with staff, and we will act where we can act. We have better information. Right now, we don't have that much information. So I wanted to just qualify those things that were discussed in the executive committee. Other questions or comments from the commissioners about the meeting report? And to ask in clarity to the, uh, with the staff, we will continue with the exercise so that we can get the information, so that when we are able to act, we can, and we won't have to start the process over again. And, and so the exercise is understanding where are there gaps in equity, right? What actions do you want to take if we have, right? Their grades, their titles, and to ensure, one thing I, I learned in this process is that it's not really about how you show up to work. It's not really about how hard you're working, how well you're working. The question that they're looking at is what are we asking of them? And what it looks like is that we have been asking of the staff to do certain jobs that maybe when we were a smaller agency, uh, may have been, uh, their grades may have reflected that. Now that we have grown and the technology has developed even more, uh, the skill set that we've adds up to staff, uh, has increased, and the grades now need to reflect what is now being asked. And so, uh, D C H R has done a great job of working with us and educating us on that. So, our goal is to wait until the complete, all the staff have been talking to, everybody is, uh, seen and has given us their fullness of their recommendations. We'll share that out together at one time. And I, I think it's important for us to understand, because we do have concerns coming from the staff. We need to be prepared, respond to them, and to some extent, we're waiting on D C H R to finish the study, and then we're waiting on, is there money? How much money we have to be able to reconcile? Any gaps? Questions, comments, reactions? I will go to finance reports, uh, and somewhere between Janice Kim, who is our the chair, and Brandon Saunders. Thank you, Chris. We'll now take the finance review.
Good afternoon. My name is Janice Kim, and I'm wearing a black Asian woman, the short black hair, um, black dress, and some of my summer appearances. Um, we did have a meeting this, uh, past week in our finance committee, and I want to pass to Brandon, the resource allocation officer, to take us through all the numbers that we discussed.
Thank you, Janice. Um, and I would also like to point out before, uh, I dive into the numbers, that it was Janice's first meeting with us, um, overall. So, um, we took it through just a brief, brief synopsis of, uh, you know, the D C budget and some of the current context, the unique context that is circling the agency right now, and how it kind of all, um, wraps together. And, um, of course, and it was just great, um, having, you know, Janice just join us for the first time overall. And so.
If I could just interrupt for a minute. So we also want to thank Kimber McKitty, who was the treasurer and then chair. I'm here for some, we passed, went on the torch, the fun, and the product to Janice. So thank you, Brandon.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Chairperson, uh, Van Lee, I also like that, yes, I know Kimber served the, uh, extra year for us too, and help was very beneficial in, uh, helping me get transitioned as well. So I like to shout her out for that as well. Um, thank you. Um, and, and we can kind of move to the next report, uh, or next slide rather. And so I know it may be a little, uh, a little bit small, but with the numbers, uh, it's a, the split between the admin side of the budget and the grand side of the budget, um, at the agency, um, with that small percentage number actually says, um, on the administration side is fifty-one point two one percent of the budget. So, um, we're just into quarter three now. So, we're a little bit right on track. Some of this actually, um, with a lot, some of our large purchase orders, um, not to get too granular, um, we're kind of frozen in this mayoral process in which there's, everything has been halted. And so, had that been processed just by happenstance of timing, that number would actually drop a little bit lower. So we're just around, actually about fifty percent, um, overall of available funding, um, right on track with the grants, uh, overall. Obviously, that's, um, we're pretty much fully expended. A few programs that I'll highlight later on, um, have now, has now increased that available amount, but that's also a good thing. But that number is fifteen percent overall. So we can proceed to the next slide. Um, excuse me. So this shows that administrative side, admin services side of the budget, which is approximately, um, I want to say about eighteen percent, uh, for this current fiscal year, um, right? I, I won't dive too deep into all of the granularity of the numbers, but, um, in this, in this table represents all the various categories and concludes the agency's personnel services for, um, just the available budget amount. And then we can move to the next slide as well. And so this is, uh, for those that are even more curious, intellectually curious, this is an even further breakdown of the previous slide. So, the previous slide essentially has all the main, uh, non-personnel services, um, categories at the agency. Real quick, that's equipment, supplies, uh, other services and charges and contracts, other service and charges like professional services and so forth. Um, this is even further breakdown of that. So you can see. Um, this is even further breakdown of that, so you can see, um, at a more specific level, um, overall. More detailed than this is our actual non-item breakdown of the budget, um, overall, but this level is was presented in the mayor's budget book. And so we can proceed to the next slide. And so this is our breakdown of the overall grants, um. And one thing I would like to highlight that was a little bit of a change from, uh, the last one, that little change, a big change. Um, the color to curb, uh, um, new project for public arts, which we recently voted on is now, is now, um, highlighted in the table now. So, uh, while that, and, and I am in the midst of now, um, working on the agency submission for the mayoral order as we speak, uh, for those, um, grantees, that is, uh, now available to be distributed. And so we can kind of, kind of just close out the, uh, the, the, my presentation. And one thing I just wanted to kind of highlight is, uh, that, that we did in speaking to the mayor order. I think that Aaron did a pretty good job of highlighting that in his director's notes, but uh, we, in our meeting, we did go over a little bit more of the specifics in terms of, uh, the current agency's context of, uh, what cat, current categories that you, that you saw there are more affected than, than not in terms of the, um, the, the future, uh, quarter three and quarter four outlook overall. And with that said, um, if I miss anything, I'm always available to answer any questions.
Also, I'd like to ask this for context for the commissioners. We know that, uh, as an individual agency, we, uh, have been granted an incorporation authority to utilize our fund balance. And, um, some years depending upon certain fees are paid to the district. Uh, we do get a thing called special purpose revenue, something called S R revenue. Um, the last two years, or I can say this since I've been here, um, the S R revenue has not been, you not got it. You know, it's been granted to us, but then it's been absorbed back into the executive office of the mayor. And that's the right the mayor does have. Um, when it comes to our fund balance, typically, uh, we have access to the fund balance ourselves. Um, we have started our planning with those things in mind, uh, and I believe, uh, granted it was about January, we got the word that, oh, everything is going to court and be planned. And then, uh, all of that was halted as far as, uh, uh, special purpose revenue as well as, uh, the fund balance. So I began in January advocating to the budget office, generally to ensure before this crisis came, as we're in now, um, that they were aware of the needs and the priorities of, uh, CEH. And this is the good thing. The good thing is that of our special purpose revenues and, uh, our, uh, fund balance, uh, we did not need the entirety thereof. We'll need a, a portion or a small piece of it. However, since we have not gotten it yet, and as Brandon indicated in his, uh, report, we're moving on to the, uh, budget year. So as we're making cuts, some of the things that, uh, to the staff, some things normally liked to have happened may not happen. Um, and that's just part of what we'll have to do, given the circumstances that we're in. We will know more, uh, next week, uh, or once Congress comes back and they decide to vote. If they do vote, if they vote for the fix, then this has just been an exercise in knowing that we know how to be fruitful and cut back on our budgets, and that is our prayers. If not, we will have made some, uh, some decisions just around some of the initiatives that we had, uh, for this year. However, many of the initiatives have been brought forward by the commissioners. They've all been reflected. That's what me and Brandon were speaking about earlier. We've been trying to, uh, uh, cut. Um, the submission that he makes will go to the, uh, budget office. They then will make some decisions on their part. And we will get back. Now, Brandon has told me it's best if we make the cuts ourselves, uh, and it's, uh, um, I hate to say it, I'm a little emotional about some of our debates I don't want to let go of, you know, in a sense. So, uh, we will see, uh, but we're doing that, 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 uh, exercise right now. And I just want to commend Brandon and his team uh, for going through this work because in the art, sometimes the end part of the year comes together not as, as closely or close to the last, the beginning part of the year. So he's been really, uh, putting this together for us. I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
And I would like to comment on this topic. So, we are team players. We are part of the city. We're not just our own, our own, our own job. Uh, we're not tone deaf. We understand the economics of the city. So we will deal with that as best we can. What is a high priority to us, we will push as hard as we can. Uh, but as I said, when we have other budget issues, when the money comes from the city, we will distribute it in the most equitable, professional way possible. That we can definitely. But we can't control the budget. We can push and advocate, but at the end of the day, everybody's gonna have to give us something, right? And so we are trying to be realistic about it. That is not saying that we just say, here, take all the money. We don't care about our constituents, but we're not tone deaf, we're team players. So, I hope that is okay with all the commissioners. Any other questions on finance, maybe? I'm gonna go to grants, Gretchen.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Moore. I'm the chair of the grants committee. I'm a black female, white flag. Um, green sweater and platinum layer.
Good, good.
Okay. Um, in terms of FY twenty six, our spring grants are set to close tomorrow, April twenty second, as Erin mentioned earlier, at ten PM. Um, this includes our general operating support grant program, GOS. East Arts Grant Program, EA. Projects, Events and Festival, PEP. Tow applications to date, GOS Generalist, ninety eight. GOS Service, thirteen. GOS Capacity Building, twenty six. GOS Two-Year Grants, ninety five. PEP Five Individual, one eighty seven. PEP Organizations, fifty eight. East Arts, forty three, for a total of five hundred and twenty applications. Last year, when we closed, we actually had five hundred and fifteen, so we were a little ahead of that already. Our grants managers will be online, ready to help until ten PM close. That's ten PM on April the twenty second, so feel free to contact the grants managers, in particular, grants if you have questions. If you have any questions, please, everybody's laughing about that. These guys were hard. They were really hard and they're here to help you. So anybody who's listening to me, please take advantage of that. If you have questions, please call. Our summer grants are opening in four weeks. Our FY twenty six Arts and Humanities Education Project, A H F. Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. Field trip experiences and capital projects. The new grants openings for A H F are Tuesday, May twelve, through Tuesday, June the seventeen. A H F P, Tuesday, May twelve, through June seventeen. M T E, May twelve through the seventeenth, and, excuse me, capital projects, May twelve through Tuesday, June seventeen. All of these dates are listed on our website, so please make sure you put them on your calendars. And again, please feel free to call the specific grants manager if you have questions. Our new grant managers report for FY twenty six applicants. Our grants managers have been actively supporting FY twenty six applicants through a range of initiatives designed for their success. These efforts include workshops, a town hall, onsite office hours, and newly introduced senior grants offers, your Saturday office hours. I think last Saturday, Terrell, was the first Saturday where we actually had you and the rest of the grants managers.
It's me, Terrell.
Terrell, Terrell was there on Saturday. Big hand to all of the brands, where these folks work really hard and they really helped a lot because we won more brands. The following took place in March and April. GOS Workshops, four. Town Hall, one. EA Workshops, three. PEP Workshops, three, or onsite office hours, four. S G S Saturday Office Hours, one, and every Friday Live Chat, six. To streamline the grants process, the grants, events and communications teams developed several concise instructional videos for both applicants and grantees. We currently have four completed videos, um, with more on the way. And we'd like to preview two of these for you today. So we're gonna show two of them to you today. And the others will be, um, up on the website with links so that you can see them. Video number one is Completing Your W Nine. Yeah, we're, yeah. Number two is Obtaining DC Clean Hands. The reason we started with those is because those are the ones we had most questions about. Those are the ones that end up bouncing back, um, all the time because there's something there that's not correct. So hopefully this will help everyone. And, and, please feel free to call the appropriate grant manager. There are gonna be resources for grants applicants slash D C Arts on D C Arts dot D C dot gov. Want to start with, uh, Completing Your W Nine? Yeah? Okay.
We may, we may not have audio on this one. Let me just check, can you turn? One more thing to note. Written in, I think, only. He said, to note that the videos are also all transcribed in Spanish. So, he's spoken in English with a, he translates in Spanish, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Since, since we don't have sound, why don't we just direct people to the, to the videos?
Yeah, since we're not going to be able to see them, yeah, we'll direct everyone to go to resources for grant applicants. Okay, D C Arts on D C Arts dot D C dot gov, and you'll see the four videos and you'll see our, here.
If I plagiarize Maggie, I heard her say, it's smart. Because we do know all of us know the issue of filling out the W Nines, which may seem simple. And the clean hands thing is a big problem. So having that, those videos is good, and now there's your company as well.
Just to remind those who are coming to the office, it's even more easier because we now have a front suite. So you can just come right through the door and right to your left, uh, security will be there for a second, and they'll be able to accompany you in your places.
Other question? Thank you, Gretchen.
I have a question, but I have to say that, as one who always runs the third to the past, this is like a hundred and eighty. Congratulations. Things have really changed around here.
That was a compliment, that was. Good celebration.
Brandon, thanks.
Thanks, Gretchen. Uh, any other questions about grants? Otherwise, we go to the public art, Carl.
Good evening. My name is Carla Sims. I'm African. Good evening. My name is Carla Sims, an African American female, wearing a black, um. Uh, the Public Arts Committee, uh, and the Public Arts Team met, uh, two weeks ago, I think it was on Wednesday. Has been doing a really good job. We just wanted to. Very nice day. We opened Behind the Uniform, like exhibition, which is, um, hallway and over here. I will turn it over here in the car, so it's, the rest of the, uh, the podium.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Uh, my name is Corinne Miller. I lead the Public Arts Team, a white woman with brown hair and glasses. And I'm also wearing a silver black jacket today, um, and I'm very happy to be here.
That's all solidarity.
Yeah, whatever you say. So, a, a brief summary on, uh, the Public Arts Team's recent efforts. Um, so we continue our work with FY twenty five grantees while developing plans and requests for applications for the FY twenty six grant cycle. It's been mentioned several times, but I think there's repeating. Um, we opened a successful exhibition of Behind the Uniform, um, in the gallery a couple of weeks ago. Uh, on Thursday, March twenty seventh, I think we've mentioned this in a couple of meetings now, um, but we hosted a successful host committee meeting for the Coda Summit, uh, which will be a public art conference held at Arena Stage from September twenty fourth through twenty sixth, uh, later this year. Uh, CEH has also been working to try to finalize a memorandum of understanding for an FY twenty five murals DC partnership with the Department of Public Works over the last several months. So I want to provide an update on that as well. Um, unfortunately, we have not been able to move forward with that. Uh, it will not be able to move the program for this fiscal year. Um, however, we have offered to partner with DPW again for FY twenty six, so hopefully we can work with them next year. Uh, the lapse in programming has created a void for mural artists and a gap in our programming. In response to both community and property owner requests and our desire to expand mural opportunities, we will look into developing other opportunities for FY twenty six and beyond. Um, it was the Public Art Committee's recommendation that staff continue to work closely with DPW and if necessary, the deputy mayor of operations and infrastructure to reach better agreement and clarity around the future of the program, which the team is currently doing. The Public Art Committee, um, I'm sorry, uh, finally, the Public Art Team is in the final stages of developing a collections policy. Uh, this, this may seem, seem dry, but the collections policy is key to creating a framework for the stewardship of CH's art collection. The policy ensures best museum standards for how the collection is paired for, preserved for future generations, made accessible to the community, and given proper resources. Uh, so a couple of program specific updates as well, um. Uh, the first is around the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program. I want to highlight a couple of upcoming activities around the Behind the Uniform exhibition. So the next thing will be on Saturday, May seventeen, from two to four PM. There'll be a Song in My Heart Community Workshop. And then on Wednesday, May twenty first, from five to eight PM, uh, there'll be a closing reception as well. Um, we will get a list of upcoming exhibitions out to commissioners shortly, um, just so this is on everyone's calendars. And then looking ahead to FY twenty six, the request for applications for a new cycle of A E G, that's Art Exhibition Curatorial Grants, will open for application on Monday, May fifth. Uh, next up, we have an update on FY twenty five Art Bank Grant Program. So grant administration for that program is ending, with only three grantees still in various stages of grant and payment processing. I think that number's gotten even smaller since this report was written. Um, so the staff as well had a scheduled payment processing compared to that of FY twenty four. So lots of new processes that have served us well. Um, and looking forward to the FY twenty six Art Bank Program, a new request for application uh, was released on Monday, April fourteen, so last Monday that went out. Um, the bulk of the RFA remained the same, and changes to the guidelines include that, uh, CEH will only acquire one artwork per artist. Artists may only submit three artworks instead of five for consideration. And then the maximum grant award for a single artwork from individuals is fifteen thousand, and organizations may receive up to twenty five thousand. And finally, works in a series, um, will not be accepted. So the Public Art Committee discussed these changes, asked about the requirements, um, and, uh, specifically the requirement that artists must, uh, live within fifty miles of Washington D C. Uh, so there was discussion of this. Um, we encourage commissioners and others to help share information and spread the word about the Art Bank Program. It's a very, uh, popular and robust program. We receive a lot of submissions, but always great to receive more.
Brandon, you may want to make note that the maximum grant for, uh, individual orders went up from ten thousand dollars to now fifteen. It went up for the organizations from twenty thousand dollars to thirty five thousand.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so the, it's, it's up from, it's from ten to fifteen for individual and from twenty to twenty five for organizations. So, and that hasn't, hadn't changed in a number of years. Um, there had been no cap prior to FY twenty one, as I understand it, and then it hadn't changed since FY twenty one. So it's been a number of years since those numbers had moved. Uh, next we have Color the Curve. This will save the program. So, the review panel for that grant line met on Monday, March third, and recommended for finalists. Uh, these finalists were then approved by vote through the PAC. Uh, and then the recommendations were accepted by the full commission by vote at the March seventeenth meeting. Notifications and kickoffs with the artists are scheduled for this month. Uh, and then two, two more updates, uh, the FY twenty five Public Art Building Communities Grant Program. Uh, those grantees continue to develop their respective projects. The three organizational grantees are working through uh, all kinds of public art things that, that happen, like permitting logistics and fabrication. The Nicholson Project is advancing to complete their project with an estimated launch plan for May twenty twenty five. So we'll send information when that's finalized. Um, we're working closely with grantees as they navigate various challenges around permitting, increasing material costs due to recent tariffs, and even a bus relocation project. So this is, uh, part of the course with public art. Um, FY twenty six P A B C request for applications was. Um, F Y twenty-six P A B C request for applications was released Monday, March seventeenth. I think about a month earlier than typically released. Uh, and then will close Tuesday, July twenty-second. So that one is open for a while. Um, and then noted in the report are several, um, upcoming workshops available for applications to get support and questions answered. Final thing I have in my report, uh, the team's been very busy. Uh, the Public Art Team is currently also organizing twenty-five open requests for Art Bank Loan Program. Uh, so this is, continues to be a very popular and in-demand, um, programs that we have to install artworks at district agencies and council member offices. And in the report are a couple of, um, both recent selections and installations. Uh, that is everything. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
Questions? I'll make a comment. You all are very busy. This is great. Very, thank you. Any other questions, any commissioners? Uh, we have no unfinished business, but we do have one new business item, a Go-Go update. Me, cheers.
Yes, I'm the Me, cheers, Commissioner. Black, some. Just have a little statement. Uh, we had a Go-Go meeting with our inspiring gathering, united artists like A M R Glover, community leaders like Ron Loeben, and culture bearers like Mark Williams. All dedicated to preserve and elevate D C signature sound. The room buzzed with conversation on legacy, ownership, organization. Even everyone energized to raise the moving culture forward. Tomorrow, we're going to run Saki, a medieval art, or private tour of the Go-Go Museum, to the team that's supporting the work. Big thank you to Aaron, Reggie, Cora, Audrey, Grace, and Patience Lethal. Oh, I'm sorry. And Dave. You look at me like you got.
Private tour, I believe, Go-Go Museum is really poignant because it's one of the first times we've had, you know, the Mid-Atlantic Arts Foundation, they have had no relationship with Go-Go for. So this opens up our artists to an opportunity, not only to get funding for, uh, Mid-Atlantic Arts, but the one thing Mid-Atlantic does very well, they do touring funds. And that's something that we heard at the meeting that having dollars for tours is great. At our meeting in Baltimore, uh, we expressed how great it would be, well, to, would it be, you could see Go-Go in all of the Mid-Atlantic region, being able to tour. And in particular, so this is a wrap, all of that. And then Juan, after meeting with you, will be meeting with us, uh, at the Art U Red tomorrow evening. So this is a, this is a, uh, this is a response to letting you be at our offices and, and we're staying true to our word.
I have a question. What did you say? Did you say touring Go-Go? I mean, touring funds for shelves door to door?
Yeah, Mid-Atlantic Arts, that's one of the big things that they really specialize in. And they asked us if we form a touring, like a touring grant here in Washington, if we would, you know, consult and work with them because they kind of master all of the, where the pitfalls are and they can help us in wrapping stuff up.
I have a question in, in the spirit of transparency. I don't know how many of you saw this production this year of black and white. Um, but we've been asked by several people from the downtown, especially coming to the Apollo in New York. And our biggest thing was, was we were dug to come, but, you know, getting on the road. So.
Tell me, um, I'll see if I can do an introduction to you all and Juan as well. And one of the things that Mid-Atlantic does not give, um, a ton of grants to D C. Uh, the majority of their dollars goes to New York. So they're looking for things in Washington that they can start to fund. And that's part of our partner, our, our partners that will, you know, share the question.
And I want to thank the Me, cheers for his leadership. Listen, we said about this, Go-Go is official use of Washington D C. So C H is trying to be intentional in our support of advocating, uh, you know, whatever it takes to really promote that in the right sort of ways. So these are good things. So that's a lot of what we want to do. I think we started with this.
In the history and the interest of me going back, we've come along. Our first commission meeting was around the issue of Go-Go. And here's where we are today. So, if you'd like to leave, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody. Now, so I have no other agenda items. Uh, so our close now, the next meeting, the mission will be held Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P M. Time is now six thirty-three.